And this is Gavel to Gavel, WCVW-TV's complete coverage of Richmond City Council. Good evening once again. I'm Dick Harmon. Welcome to our first meeting of November. This is Veterans Day, November 11th. Before we get into the agenda, I just want to say a big thank you to all the veterans who have given up their time. And there's a beautiful sign outside of Ashland, driving down the back road there. It says, "All gave some, some gave all." And that sums up all the veterans have done. So, thank you, veterans. And if you're up there right across the building, it doesn't just have to be today. Any day you see a veteran, just take the time and say, "Thank you for serving our country." Okay, let's look at the agenda tonight now. It looks like a big one. Forty-five items. However, four consent agenda items. Twenty-six appointments, eleven reappointments, with a total of thirty-seven, and four on the regular agenda. And the agenda is not going to be as long as you might think. Let's go through it right now. We'll let you know what we're talking about. Okay, starting off with the consent agenda, item number one. This is ordinance 2013-205, special use at 705 and 709 Libby Avenue for the purpose of a bank with a drive-up facility. This one's being continued till December 9th. Item two, ordinance 2013-211, that's transferring appropriate funds of $394,855 from school, planning, and construction, providing the installation of specific technical infrastructure and equipment in the new Martin Luther Kane Junior Middle School. That's being continued toward the next meeting, and that will be on November 25th. Item three, this is one there's been quite a bit of discussion about. Ordinance 2013-214, and this is pertaining to the Stony Point Community Unit Plan. This would be purpose authorizing multifamily residential office, restaurant, and retail uses in the Northern Map section, amending the 2009 development plans, and that one is being continued until November 25th. The only item left on the consent agenda. Item four, ordinance number 2013-226, this authorizes the acquisition by gift from CSX Transportation of any and all rights of CSX Transportation, Inc., by way of quitclaim in the property or a portion of the property at 3101 Warf Street for the public purpose of the construction of the Virginia Capital Trail Project. That item stays on consent agenda. That's the only item remaining on consent. Now, we'll just run through quickly without going through all the graphics. All the appointments and reappointments. We've got thirty-seven papers here, items five through forty-one, that are appointments or reappointments. We'll run through them, and not to take a lot of time with them, but here's what's going on. Okay, item five, appoint Lana Agostini, member of the Board of Directors of Central Virginia Waste Management Authority. Number six, appointing Robert Birdseye as a member of the Capital Area Partnership Uplifting People. Seven, appointing John Bolachek as a member of the Highway Safety Commission. Eight, appointing George Brock, a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals Plumbing Division. Nine, appointing Gordon S. Burke, a member of the Advisory Board for Assessment of Towing Fees and Storage of Vehicles. Ten, approving designation of Deputy Chief John Buterla to represent the Chief of Police, Ray Tazovich, at meetings of the Community Criminal Justice Board. Eleven, appointing John Kane, a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals Plumbing Division. Twelve, to appoint Thurman Cash III, a member of the J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College Board. Thirteen, appointing Doug Cole, a member of the Urban Design Committee. Fourteen, appointing William Cooper, a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Richmond Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Fifteen, appointing C. Michael Decamps, a member of the Board of Directors, Richmond Ambulance Authority. Sixteen, appointing Thomas Farley, a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals Electrical Division. Seventeen, appointing John Paul Goode, a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals Electrical Division. Eighteen, appointing Joseph Gurley, a member of the Personnel Board of the City of Richmond for a term commencing upon adoption of the resolution. Nineteen, appointing Robbly S. Jones, a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Richmond Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Twenty, appointing Ann Lee Kerr, a member of the Board of Directors, Lewis Ginter Botanical Gardens. All those are appointments. They'll be staying on the consent or on the appointment agenda. And remember, for appointments, you must be present. Number twenty-one, appoints David Long, a member of the Community Criminal Justice Board. That one's being continued until next meeting. Twenty-two, appointing Roger Minter, a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals Electrical Division. Twenty-three, appointing Julie Malloy, a member of the Community Criminal Justice Board. Twenty-four, approving the designation of Tricia Mueller to represent the Honorable Richard B. Campbell at meetings of the Community Criminal Justice Board. Twenty-five, appointing Arsilias D. Redding, a member of the Clean City Commission. Twenty-six, this one's going to be withdrawn. We've appointed Anthony Rogers, a member of the Personnel Board, City of Richmond. That paper has been withdrawn. Twenty-seven, appointing Ira Sae, a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals Electrical Division. Twenty-eight, appoint Timothy Smalls, a member of the Aging and Disabilities Advisory Board. Twenty-nine is being withdrawn. This one was appointing Frederick Wag, a member of the Green City Commission. That paper withdrawn. Thirty, appointing George Ben Waldrup, a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals. Those are all appointments now. Appointments, as I say, they must be present to be voted upon tonight. Now we get to reappointments. They do not need to be here tonight. So, number thirty-one, reappointing Joseph Boatwright, a member of the Board of Directors, Richmond Ambulance Authority. Thirty-two, reappointing Kenneth Daniels, a member of the Board of Trustees, Richmond Retirement System. Thirty-three, reappointing Robert Easter, a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals, General Division. Thirty-four, reappoint Joseph Patrick Farley, a member of the Green City Commission. Thirty-five, reappointing Tyrone B. Green, a member of the Board of Directors, Richmond Ambulance Authority. Thirty-six, reappoints Michael Herring, the Attorney for the Commonwealth, as a member of the Community Criminal Justice Board. Thirty-seven, reappointing Elizabeth Mathis as a member of the Board of Directors, Richmond Ambulance Authority. Thirty-eight, reappointing Casey McGurn, a member of the Green City Commission. Thirty-nine, reappointing Jeffrey Odell, a member of the Board of Directors, Richmond Ambulance Authority. Number forty, reappointing Marilyn Olds, a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Richmond Redevelopment and Housing Authority. And forty-one, reappointing Oliver Singleton, a member of the Minority Business Enterprise and Emerging Small Business Advisory Board. Okay, those are all appointments and reappointments. Now, let's go back to the agenda once again, and you'll be surprised when you hear all this, because item forty-two, ordinance 2013-199, special use at 1110 Grove Avenue for the purpose of permitting up to seven multifamily dwelling units. That one is being continued until the next meeting on November 25th. Item forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five, these are the RMA Diamond Papers. Forty-three, accepting from RMA a release of easement for the purpose of parking located in the vicinity of North Boulevard, Robin Hood and Hermitage. Forty-four, ordinance 2013-222, that's executing an agreement between the city and RMA to lease certain real property, a 3,003 North Boulevard. And item forty-five, ordinance 2013-223, and that would authorize acquisitions of the parcel of property owned by RMA, known as 3,003 North Boulevard, for the purpose of owning, maintaining, or operating a stadium or a sports facility. All those papers are also being continued until the next meeting on November 25th. So what does that leave us with? Okay, let's take a look. We started out with four items on the consent agenda. Three of those are being continued. We have one item remaining. That's it. Appointments and reappointments. We started out with thirty-seven. One has been continued, two have been withdrawn. The result, thirty-four remaining, and those will start at the very beginning of the meeting. Regular agenda, we had four items. All four continued, so we now have no items left on the regular agenda. So, basically, we've got the appointments and reappointments papers. We've got one item on consent agenda, and that's it on the agenda. Now, there may be something coming up with expedited consideration. So far, we haven't heard of anything, but we'll find out as we go along. Now, citizens' comment period. We have eight speakers tonight. I know he's speaking on such things as state of the city, renovation for West Ham Train Station, baseball field, concerns about economic development in Shackle Bottom, downtown economic development, public safety, jobs, and disabled citizens. So those are the items from our citizens' comment period. Then, the formal awards and recognitions docket. Let's see, we have one to the City of Saitama, Japan Educational Exchange Program. There'll be one for Richmond Adoption Awareness Month. A public and community service award to VCU scholars in real environments. Then there'll be Berkeley City Music Network scholarships being given tonight, awarded to Iain D. Williams, Drew Anderson, Morgan Burrus, and Brandon Bowser. Then we'll have an award to Dr. Charles Price, recognize him for his ongoing community service. And one to Mr. Bob Argabright, recognize him for his ongoing community service. So that's the way it looks. Now, at first glance, I'm looking out there at the audience, it's not as crowded as it was last meeting. We don't appear to have anything controversial, but you never know. We'll be finding out once we have started. And we'll be getting started in just a couple of minutes with tonight's Richmond City Council meeting. I'm Dick Harmon. Stay tuned.
After exiting the building, please proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot boarded by Clay Eighth and Ninth Streets. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors exiting the Citizen speakers guideline. Citizen wishing to speak during public hearing and/or citizen comment period generally have three minutes to speak. Person appearing before council are not allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business venture, use language of a personal nature which insults or demean any person, include comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties, or address or question staff members directly. All questions are to be directed to the president of council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time and future disciplinary actions as necessary, which could include borrowing from attendance at future meetings of city council for a period of six months.
Mr. President, for the record, all members of council are in attendance this evening.
Thank you. If that's the case, then can we please move forward with the appointments and reappointments on tonight's agenda?
Yes, and when I call your name, if you would please stand or raise your hand. First is item number five, resolution number 2013-R212 to appoint Lena Agostini. Lana Agostini, I apologize. As a member of the Board of Directors for the Central Virginia Waste Management Authority for a term terminating March 22, 2014. Item number six, resolution number 2013-R213 to appoint Robert Birdseye. As a member of the Capital Area Partnership Uplifting People Incorporated for a term terminating March 24, 2016. Item number seven is resolution number 2013-R214 to appoint John Bolachek. As a member of the Highway Safety Commission for a term terminating March 24, 2015. Item number eight is resolution number 2013-R215 to appoint George Brock. As a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals Plumbing Division for a term terminating January 12, 2015. Item number nine is resolution number 2013-R216 to appoint George S. Burke. As a member of the Advisory Board for the Assessment of Towel Fees and Storage of Vehicles for a term terminating May 24, 2016. Item number 10, resolution number 2013-R217 to appoint the designation of Deputy Chief John Buterla to represent Chief of Police Ray Tarasovik at meetings of the Community Criminal Justice Board. Item number 11, resolution number 2013-R218 to appoint John Kane as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals Plumbing Division for a term terminating June 25, 2016. Item number 12, resolution number 2013-R219 to appoint Thurman S. Cash III. As a member of the J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College Board for a term terminating July 1, 2017. Item 13, resolution number 2013-R220 to appoint Doug Cole as a member of the Urban Design Committee for a term terminating March 11, 2016. Item 14, resolution number 2013-R221 to appoint William Cooper. As a member of the Board of Commissioners for the Richmond Redevelopment and Housing Authority for a term terminating March 26, 2016. Item 15, resolution number 2013-R222 to reappoint C. Michael Decamps as a member of the Board of Directors for the Richmond Ambulance Authority for a term terminating October 24, 2015. Item 16, resolution number 2013-R223 to appoint Thomas Farley. As a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals Electrical Division for a term terminating June 25, 2016. Item 17, resolution number 2013-R224 to appoint John Paul Goode. As a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals for a term terminating November 11, 2016. Item 18, resolution number 2013-R225 to appoint Joseph Curly. As a member of the Personnel Board for the City of Richmond for a term terminating April 26, 2016. Item 19, resolution number 2013-R227 to appoint Rob Lee S. Jones. As a member of the Board of Commissioners for the Richmond Redevelopment and Housing Authority for a term terminating January 12, 2017. Item 20, resolution number 2013-R228 to appoint Ann Lee Kerr. As a member of the Board of Directors of Lewis Ginter Botanical Gardens, Inc. for a term terminating April 1, 2018. Item 21, resolution number 2013-R229 to appoint David Long. I'm sorry, that paper is being continued till November 25. Item number 22, resolution number 2013-R230 to appoint Roger Mentor. As a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals Electrical Division for a term terminating June 25, 2016. Item 23, resolution number 2013-R231 to appoint Julie Molly. As a member of the Criminal Justice Board for a term terminating March 26, 2014. Item 24, resolution number 2013-R232. To approve the designation of Tricia Muller to represent the Honorable Robert B. Campbell at meetings of the Criminal Justice Board. Item 25, resolution number 2013-R233 to appoint Arceius D. Redding. As a member of the Clean City Commission for a term terminating March 22, 2014. Item number 26, resolution number 2013-R234 will be withdrawn later this evening. Item 27, resolution number 2013-R235 to appoint Ira R. C. Jr. As a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals Electrical Division for a term terminating March 21, 2014. Item 28, resolution number 2013-R236 to appoint Timothy L. Smalls. As a member of the Aging and Disabilities Advisory Board for a term terminating March, November 11, 2016. Item number 29, resolution number 2013-R237 is scheduled to be withdrawn later this evening. Item number 30, resolution number 2013-R238 to appoint George Ben Waldrop. As a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals Electrical Division for a term terminating November 11, 2016. Item number 31, resolution number 2013-R239 to reappoint Joseph W. Boatwright III as a member of the Board of Directors for the Richmond Ambulance Authority for a term terminating November 28, 2015. Item 32, resolution number 2013-R240 to reappoint Kenneth Daniels as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Richmond Retirement System for a term terminating November 22, 2016. Item 33, resolution number 2013-R241 to reappoint Robert L. Easter as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals General Division for a term terminating September 28, 2015. Item 34, resolution number 2013-R242 to reappoint Joseph Patrick Farley as a member of the Green City Commission for a term terminating October 25, 2016. Item 35, resolution number 2013-R243 to reappoint Tyrone B. Green as a member of the Board of Directors of Richmond Ambulance Authority for a term terminating October 24, 2015. Item 36, resolution number 2013-R244 to reappoint Michael N. Herring as a member of the Community Criminal Justice Board for a term terminating November 11, 2015. Item 37, resolution number 2013-R245 to reappoint Elizabeth Matisch as a member of the Board of Directors of the Richmond Ambulance Authority for a term terminating October 24, 2015. Item 38, resolution number 2013-R246 to reappoint Casey McGurran as a member of the Green City Commission for a term terminating October 25, 2016. Item 39, resolution number 2013-R247 to reappoint Jeffrey E. Odell as a member of the Board of Directors of the Richmond Ambulance Authority for a term terminating October 24, 2015. Item 40, resolution number 2013-R248 to reappoint Marilyn D. Oles as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Richmond Redevelopment and Housing Authority for a term terminating November 24, 2015. And item number 41, resolution number 2013-R249 to reappoint Oliver R. Singleton as a member of the Minority Business Enterprise and Emerging Small Business Advisory Board for a term terminating November 28, 2016. Mr. President, those are all of the appointments and reappointments for consideration this evening.
Thank you. Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in opposition to any of the appointments or reappointments? Are there those that wish to speak in support of any of the appointments or reappointments? Bringing it back to council for any discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the question.
Council is voting on the appointments and reappointment papers as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Adelastow?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Those papers have all been adopted.
Thank you. For those of you who are here for appointments or reappointments, there's a gentleman in a bowtie standing over on my left, your right. If you would please go follow him to the clerk's office where you'll be administered or re-administered the oath of office. We thank you each for your willingness to serve the City of Richmond and its residents. Madam Clerk, I believe we've reached the point of awards and presentations in tonight's docket.
That is correct. The first recognition being presented by Council President Charles Samuels and Suzette Dinslow, Council Chief of Staff, Office of the Mayor, recognizes the Honorable City of Seitama Japan's Educational Exchange Program Delegation. Present to receive the recognition are exchange teachers and Catherine Nexon, Chair of Richmond City Council Sister Cities Commission Japan-Richmond Committee. The Honorable Mayor Dwight C. Jones and the Honorable Members of Richmond City Council hereby unite to welcome the Honorable City of Seitama Japan's Educational Exchange Program Delegation. Participating in the annual educational exchange program with the Richmond City Council Sister Cities Commission, this year marks the 14th year of the successful partnership between Richmond and the sister city, Seitama Japan. As part of the program, educators work to promote further understanding of language, culture, and our global community. Richmond is delighted and honored once again to receive distinguished guests from Seitama Japan as we come together and celebrate the richness and diversity of our two cultures and establish a great friendship and understanding between our residents.
Thank you. On behalf of Mayor Jones, welcome to Richmond. I know he met with you last week. I know you've been to Williamsburg and Washington and to Thomas Jefferson High School.
That's right.
For a visit, so welcome. I hope you have learned while you were here and I hope you've helped impart your knowledge to teachers here. And thanks too to Ms. Catherine Nexon for making this work.
And on behalf of City Council, welcome to Richmond. Thank you for spending time here in our city. We look forward to hearing of opportunities to visit you as well in your city. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to read a message from Akihiro Hagiwara, who is the Chairman, Seitama City Council. Dear President Samuel, as Chairman of the Seitama City Council, let me extend my sincerest greeting to you on behalf of the council. It is a great pleasure to send to teachers representing Seitama City to Richmond to further strengthen our friendly relationship as sister cities. It was 19 years ago that we signed the Sister City Agreement. Over the years, we have engaged in a wide range of exchanges in such areas as culture, education, sports, and economy based on mutual understanding. I'm also very pleased that we have had reciprocal visits by our citizens which have served to deepen our friendship and have borne fruit in the form of development and prosperity for both cities. I sincerely hope that this visit our teachers will greatly contribute to enhancing our friendly and mutually beneficial relationship. Finally, I'd like to wish that the existing amicable relationship between our cities will continue to prosper for many more years to come. Please also accept my heartfelt wishes for your health and for the development of the City of Richmond. Yours sincerely, Akihiro Hagiwara.
Thank you. Thank you. I got the rest. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. President Samuels and the entire city of Richmond, we with the Sister City Commission want to thank y'all over the years for your great support of the Sister City programs. This year in particular, we are celebrating the beginning of the 20th anniversary for Sister City relations between Seitama Japan and Richmond, Virginia. We have had exchanges that spanned from cultural and sports and architecture through the years. Our two teachers that are with us today represent teacher exchange that began last year between sending teachers from the Richmond area to Seitama to teach in Seitama during the summer, and they were teaching English. And these two fine representatives from Seitama have been to Thomas Jefferson Community, Lucille Brown, Mumford, and Miles Jones. Thank you for reminding me. So we want to thank you again for not only your support from our city, but also Richmond Public Schools have been absolutely tremendous. We were honored when we went to, Saturday evening, we went to a concert, and Kate Lindsay thanked her teachers here in Richmond, and that was most fitting coming at this time. Thank you again for everything.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next recognition being presented by President Samuels and Ms. Dinslow recognizes November 2013 as Richmond Adoption Awareness Month. Present to receive the recognition is Glennis Boyd Hughes of Richmond's Department of Social Services Post Adoption Services. The Honorable Mayor Dwight C. Jones and the Honorable Members of Richmond City Council hereby unite to declare that our children are one of our most precious resources and represent the measure, strength, and success of our community. Children deserve the care, security, and stability of a permanent and loving family unit to teach, support, guide, encourage, love, protect, nurture, and prepare them, and to provide a solid foundation for growth, education, and development that is needed to help ensure that they enjoy happy, healthy, productive, and successful lives. In the United States, there are more than 100,000 children living in foster care, living in the foster care system, who are awaiting adoption. As of October 1, 2013, there were 4,970 children in foster care in Virginia with 1,360 having the goal of adoption, which includes 204 youth in foster care living in Richmond with 39 having a goal of adoption. It is a privilege to recognize the compassion and dedication of foster parents, adoptive parents, and staff of Richmond's Department of Social Services and all other local and state government and nonprofit agencies and organizations and individuals helping children. In order to further promote public awareness regarding the need for adoption, parents, for adoption, I'm sorry, for adoptive parents, and thank those helping to support children, Richmond City Council Mayor Dwight C. Jones hereby proclaimed the month of November 2013 as Richmond Adoption Awareness Month and called this observance to the attention of all Richmond residents.
On behalf of Mayor Jones, thank you so much for all you do and for all your colleagues do for helping children get adopted in this city. I can't think of any service that's more important to the children in this community, and I really appreciate all the efforts you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of City Council, I want to recognize November is Richmond Adoption Awareness Month. Thank the adoption social service workers of Richmond Social Service for the work that they do. As a guardian litem and as an attorney in the juvenile courts, I can tell you one thing's for certain. Loving, caring foster homes are essential to the development of children. And if there's anyone in the TV audience tonight or in the audience tonight that's interested in becoming a potential adoption home or a potential foster care home, please give me a call. My cellphone is 690-0898. I will put you in touch with the right people to make sure that happens because every child deserves a chance at a loving home.
Thank you. Good evening. Mr. President, members of City Council, Mayor Jones, I'm Glennis Boyd Hughes, and I'm the chairperson for the Adoption Day Committee, a collaboration of organizations that include the Richmond Department of Social Services, the Judges Clerk's Office, and Chief Operating Officer of Richmond Juvenile and Domestic Relations Courts, the Richmond City Attorney's Office, the Greater Richmond Juvenile Bar Association, the Court Appointed Special Advocates, CASA, the Richmond Sheriff's Office, and various community partners afford the privilege of hosting an annual celebration highlighting adoptions completed in the City of Richmond. Permanency for children through adoption is a worthwhile and important endeavor, one that deserves our continual support and commitment. By connecting children with their forever families, our efforts demonstrate what we value as a community. Thank you very much on behalf of the Richmond Department of Social Services, children, foster and adoptive families, and many state and local agencies and organizations working together on behalf of children for this proclamation and for bringing attention to the need for more adoptive parents. Thank you. The next recognition being presented by Counselor Cynthia Newbill recognizes VCU's Academic Scholars Program in Real Environments, also known as ASPIRE. Present to receive the recognition is Dr. Mary Slade, Director of VCU's ASPIRE Program. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council hereby unite to officially recognize, honor, and celebrate the Virginia Commonwealth University Academic Scholars Program in Real Environments, known as ASPIRE. Established in August of 2012, Virginia Commonwealth University's ASPIRE is one of the school's new two-year Living Learning Public and Community Service Certificate Programs. The program provides education, training, and hands-on work experience in the field of public and community service. Selected programs participant commit to taking specialized education and training classes and to provide 100 hours of volunteer service on behalf of the school's partnering public and community service agencies and organizations. Helping create positive change in communities by addressing critical societal needs through long-term sustainable partnership, the ASPIRE program is focused on the following impact areas: pre-K, adult education, accessibility and affordable housing, leadership development, economic development, youth mentoring, healthy living, environmental sustainability, and urban revitalization. Richmond City Council hereby recognizes the Virginia Commonwealth University Scholars Program in Real Environments and thanks the university, its staff, and participating students for their work in helping to make Richmond an even better place.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, I would like to acknowledge and thank Dr. Rau for his visionary leadership in the establishment of the VCU ASPIRE program. Academic Scholars Program in Real Environment is innovative, it's comprehensive, and it's the first of its kind of VCU. It aims to enrich and deepen students, as you see before us, their experiences in community. And the thing that I've come to appreciate the most is that it's not perfunctory work or activities. The students are engaged in authentic community projects and efforts that really do make a difference throughout our communities, whether it's been at the health fairs that I've seen them at, or the community events, or door-to-door outreach during breast cancer awareness, knocking on doors, and a host of other things. And I simply wanted to take this opportunity to thank you, and all of the students, and I know there are many more of you, but to thank all of you for the extraordinary work and for the extraordinary partnerships throughout our communities, and not just for what they've done already, but what you're committing to do even more in the future. So, Dr. Slade, just thank you and look forward to continued work together throughout the City of Richmond. It's definitely making a difference, all of their efforts, every time. They are present, they are studious, they are earnest, they're hardworking, and just really want to thank you for that.
And they vote.
And they vote.
Thank you so much. You're sweet.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. City Council, this is 22 of the 177 of your newest residents. They reside on 835 West Grace Street. They are the light of my life. They spend more than 100 hours in two years in this community. The Tenant Association at Mosby Court has been their leaders. Peter Paul Center has been their teachers. You can't imagine how the city has given back to them, and it's their turn to give back every weekend, every day that they can. But, and most recently, they all just became first-time voters and voted in the City of Richmond, so we're very thankful to be here. Thank you, Dr. Newbill.
The next recognition being presented by Counselor Chris Hilbert recognizes Berkeley City Music Network Scholarship recipients. Present to receive the recognition are Richmond's Open High School students, Andy Williams and Drew Anderson, Richmond Community High School student Morgan Burz, and Henrico County's Highland Springs High School student Brandon Bowser. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council hereby unite to recognize, honor, and celebrate students at Richmond's Open High School, Richmond Community High School, and Henrico County's Highland Springs High School who were selected to receive scholarships for and attended the five-week Berkeley City Music Network Summer Performance Programs Terry Lynn Carrington Jazz Workshop in Boston, Massachusetts, held during the months of July and August of this year. The scholarship, which includes tuition, room, and board, is a coveted honor and a recognition of musical talent and potential. In intense educational experience, the program's curriculum focuses on performance and ensemble skills, development of harmonic vocabulary, and a historical perseverance on mainstream and contemporary jazz. Associated with the Berkeley College of Music located in Boston, the Berkeley City Music Network is a national nonprofit consortium of community music organizations that help to provide music education to youth in grades four to 12 who live in underserved communities. Richmond City Council hereby recognizes, honors, and celebrates these students for earning a Berkeley City Music Network Summer Performance Program Scholarship and attending the Berkeley City Music Network Summer Performance Programs Terry Lynn Carrington Jazz Workshop, and brings us to the attention of all Richmond residents so they may share in the community's success story.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. President, Vice President, members of council, those gathered. I'm extremely proud to make this recognition. Ashby, thank you for your leadership on jazz music for a number of years and really music education for all that you've done for a number of years in our city. I do want to recognize these young men in particular. You all have done phenomenal work to get to this point, and the discipline involved in the musical instrument, it totally crushed me when I was growing up, so congratulations on that. And particularly jazz, jazz is the most difficult of, the only American music on the planet that Quincy Jones talked about, that I've heard him talk about numerous times. And I understand that you all have played with Quincy Jones. That is really incredible, along with Quentin Marsalis as well, and that's very impressive. Those are two great musicians, and so congratulations on that. I'm sure that'll be a lifetime memory for you, no question about that. I understand you've also played before former President Clinton, who's also a jazz musician. Although, I don't think his talent, I think you all have already passed him on that. He could blow a saxophone not too badly. You know, it was once said, Jesse Owens said, you know, we all have dreams, but in order to make those dreams a reality, it takes an awful lot, an awful lot, of determination, dedication, self-discipline, and effort. And so, I want to leave you with those words because truly, you embody the best that our city has to offer, and we thank you so much for that.
President Samuels, Councilman Hillmuth, and all City Council members, the Richmond Youth Jazz Guild would really like to thank you all for recognizing these four young men that I've had the pleasure of teaching since they're around 11, 12 years of age. They're now 16 and 17 years old. Jazz music is recognized the world over as a standard of excellence. These young men have studied- These young men have studied, rehearsed, practiced, and performed many, many, many times, and they have used this music and its standards of excellence to elevate themselves, to attain scholarships. Some of them have attained the scholarships mentioned more than once and have attended Berkeley since the age of 14. And we want to thank you for acknowledging these young men. Thank you so much. Councilman Hillmuth, they have a few CDs for everybody.
The next recognition being presented by Council Vice President Ellen Robertson recognizes Dr. Charles Price for his ongoing community service. Present to receive the recognition is Dr. Price. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council hereby unite to recognize, honor, and celebrate Dr. Charles Price for his ongoing community service. Through his outstanding commitment and efforts, Dr. Price has provided critical direction, support, and assistance on behalf of numerous efforts in Richmond. These efforts include his work this year on helping to create a landscaping training program with the Richmond Sheriff's Office and his ongoing work with the Community Reclamation and Improvement Project to establish the Richmond Cannon Creek Greenway Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail. Richmond City Council hereby recognize, honors, and celebrates Mr. Price for his ongoing community service and thank him and bring this recognition to the attention of all Richmond residents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. Hello? Good. All right. Thank you very much to my colleagues of City Council, to Richmond citizens, and all of our guests that are with us this afternoon. This is a continued honor to acknowledge the great work that Dr. Price has been doing in the North Side community for quite some time. We're not going to talk about how many years it's been. It's been a journey, and it's a journey that continues to go on. And over the past 12 months, he has taken the leadership in cultivating a new relationship with our Justice Department, with the Sheriff's Office, and providing some exceptionally wonderful work experience, career development opportunities for many of the residents that live there, and also are looking at a continued effort of expanding upon those opportunities for career development. And I want to say that you, Dr. Price, are probably doing the best alternative to incarceration program that we have going on in the city of Richmond. Well, we won't say that, let anyone else know that's a great secret. But you really are doing a wonderful work, and I'd like for you to take an opportunity to share some of the details of the work that is being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Vice President Robertson and members of council, Mr. President. We certainly appreciate this honor. I've had a number of opportunities to be down here, and the work on Cannon Creek Greenway is more than a bicycle and pedestrian trail. It's a greenway. It's the slopes and the street sides and the Cannon Creek Ravine and an older park over there that we're revitalizing. But it's more than that. It's a part of a community revitalization. And I think in several of our communities in the city that we need this kind of work. And I hope what small contributions I've made will guide other people to do the same kinds of things, volunteers and hand-in-hand with community workers, I mean, with city workers and city staff. I worry them so much about resources and help that they're all changing their cell phone numbers. When I come down to City Hall, they get under their desk and hide. They don't want me bugging them. But we get a lot out of City, we wring everything out of City resources we can, as well as other volunteer services and a number of resources. I think the thing that gave us the real springboard for the Cannon Creek Greenway was the National Guard commitment to come into our city and do about $300,000 worth of work for us over two summers, which helped us leverage considerable city resources as well as other private resources and doing a great deal of work on that. Just to give you a brief synopsis of the inmate, we call it Work Study, Landscaping and Groundskeeping Program. We're all familiar with the city needs in this area of the public property, as well as so many other potential for contracted services out in the city for keeping our lawns and our greenways and parks and median strips and all that in such fine shape. And this is a great opportunity for these men coming out of this program to find employment, both in the private sector as well as in various city jobs with the Department of Public Works as well as the Parks Department. We teach them a variety of things, all about equipment, use of equipment in these areas, the safety procedures that have to be followed, everything from zero-turn lawn mowers, large lawn mowers, to walk-behinds, lawn mowers of large size for vast areas of grass cutting. All of this is part of this program, and it's an intensive program that lasts for six months. We're graduating our first class in January the 10th of seven men who will be completing this program. This is not exactly prime time we're going into for groundskeeping, but we're going to, it's always been my philosophy in education, working with students, especially in vocational training, that the very best vocational training is the job, if you can think of that. We have great things planned for this vocational training effort as part of Alternatives to Incarceration, and I know that means many things to many people as we go forward, but one of those things is preparation for jobs. I think one of the finest things we can do for both our participants in the Anti-Poverty Program that we're ginning up to do now in the city, as well as the Alternatives to Incarceration Program, is to see that these people are immediately as much as possible placed in jobs after they complete their program. So, Ms. Robertson, it's a pleasure for me to do this. It has been a challenge and a great opportunity for me to use some skill sets I haven't used in quite a while. Thank you very much.
We all make mistakes, and I made a big one, too. Recognize the families of these young men that were here earlier. If you all would please stand as well, and congratulations, and thank you for your involvement. Thank you again, and pardon me here for not doing that earlier. And thank you, Ms. Robertson, for indulging me.
That's what it's all about, brother. It's always good to be able to have a second chance to get it right. Madam Clerk?
The next recognition being presented by Vice President Robertson recognizes Bob Augubright for his ongoing community service. Present to receive the recognition is Mr. Augubright. The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council hereby unite to recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. Bob Augubright for his ongoing community service. Through his outstanding commitment and efforts, Mr. Augubright has provided critical direction, support, and assistance on behalf of the numerous efforts in Richmond. These efforts include his work on behalf of the Richmond Public Schools Oak Grove Belme Elementary School, which includes his assistance in their creation of an outdoor learning environment. Mr. Augubright's dedication also includes his service as a member of the Groundworks RVA Board and Westview on the James Advisory Board, the Goode's Creek Watershed Coalition, and the Oak Grove Belme Community Advisory Board. Richmond City Council hereby recognizes, honors, and celebrates Mr. Bob Augubright for his ongoing community service and thanks him for his work.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, council members, citizens, and friends of the city of Richmond. Ms. Augubright, once again, I'm honored to have this opportunity to recognize you for the outstanding work that you are doing in the city of Richmond and especially in the Oak Grove Belme area. A few weeks ago, when I had an opportunity to come over and look at the trail and what is being done to clean up the river basin, I was extremely surprised at the level of dedicated commitment of volunteers and partners that you've brought to this community to make a reality. And like your friend on the north side of the river, Mr. Price, I don't know what the sixth district would be like without the two of you all and the work that you are doing in such a marvelous way to bring such a wonderful experience to both of those communities. And I know at times it gets frustrating when you're trying to make things happen, full-time volunteer. If we had you on payroll, it would be quite a bit of additional funds that we would have to find in the budget. And not only do you do all of this work on a volunteer basis, you've brought so many more dollars to the city of Richmond as well in this effort. And it's just my opportunity to say thanks to you on behalf of the residents that live directly in that community, on behalf of the city, on behalf of all of the taxpayers, of the great resources that you bring, and to encourage you to continue to do it. Don't give up on it, and I know that you wouldn't and you can't. We really are grateful for the work, and we'd love to hear just a little bit about what you're doing.
Right. Well, Vice President Robertson, President Samuel, and members of City Council, it's really humbling to be here in front of you because, you know, Charles and I don't do this for the individual recognition. What I do is strictly, it bothers me that children, their future can be dictated by a zip code. And just because you're born in 23234 doesn't mean that you shouldn't be given a level playing field and a chance to really succeed. So, all the effort is just to try to level the playing field and to bring the beauty and the outdoors to the families. And the families, and you've heard people say it before, that you get more out of it than you give, and that is so true. You don't go into it thinking that, and you've probably heard it a million times, but it is true. And I can look back on it, and all the families that I've met and all the children and the community support, the corporate support, the private school partnerships, and on and on and on, have really come to support us. And I certainly want to make the world different for the children and for the community, but they sure have made a huge change in me as well. So, I thank them for 10 years of making me a better person. So, I accept the award and honor them, really.
Mr. President, those are all of the awards and recognitions for this evening.
Thank you very much. May we please move forward then to the review of the list of amendments on tonight's agenda.
The amendments to tonight's agenda are as follows. Item 1, Audit Number 2013-205, will be continued to December 9th council meeting. Item 2, Audit Number 2013-211, will be continued to November 25th council meeting. Item 3, Audit Number 2013-214, will be continued to November 25th council meeting. Item 21, Resolution Number 2013-R229, will be continued to November 25th council meeting. Item 26, Resolution Number 2013-R234, has been withdrawn. Item 29, Resolution Number 2013-R237, has been withdrawn. Item 42, Audit Number 2013-199, will be continued to November 25th council meeting. Item 43, Audit Number 2013-221, will be continued to November 25th council meeting. Item 44, Audit Number 2013-222, will be continued to November 25th council meeting. And Item 45, Audit Number 2013-223, will be continued to November 25th council meeting.
Thank you. Just so everyone in the audience is clear, that means that if you're here for the Stony Point CUP, that has been continued for two weeks. There are no papers that are going to be heard tonight regarding baseball, the RMA, or Shaco Bottom redevelopment. So, if you're here for any of those things with the thought that you would have a chance for public comment, those chances are coming, but they're not coming tonight. So, while we'd love to have you stay, if you do have other things you want to do with your nights, we understand. All right. Any additional amendments or changes by council members? All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the question?
Vice President Robertson, will you make that motion to amend the agenda as read?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
We are voting on Vice President Robertson's motion to amend the agenda. Mr. Blouse?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Agilasto?
Mr. Hilbert?
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuel?
Aye.
The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you very much. Let's move on then, since we have nothing on the regular agenda, to the consent agenda, please. I'm sorry, let's do citizen comment. No, I take that back again. In great thinking, let's go ahead and do the consent agenda.
The consent agenda consists of Item 4. That's Resolution Number 2013-226, to declare that a public necessity exists for and to authorize the acquisition by gift from CSX Transportation by way of quick claim property at 3101 Wealth Street for the public purpose of construction of the Virginia Capitol Trail Project. That paper is before you.
Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in opposition to this paper? Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in support of this paper? Bringing it back to council for discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the question.
Councilors voted on the consent agenda, which consists of Item 4. Mr. Blouse?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuel?
Aye.
Item 4 has been adopted.
Wonderful, thank you. Any motions to amend and continue?
There are no motions for amendment and continuance.
Thank you. Let's move on to citizen comment then.
First citizen speaker is L. Shirley Harvey.
Ms. Harvey?
Before I start speaking, let me just say that there are some people who are sitting out there that are here for the stadium. Did you make, I don't think they are clear as to whether or not they're going to need to speak tonight.
No, no need to speak tonight.
Now, for me. Good evening. My name is L. Shirley Harvey. I want to take time to salute my brother, Andrew Jackson Horton, who was a veteran of 26 years in the U.S. Navy. I also want to take time to salute Delano Page, a veteran who was a speaker for the citizens of Richmond at these very Richmond City Council meetings. Today is his birthday. Both of these fine men will stand with me here tonight in favor of my words. What I saw at the last City Council meeting concerning favoritism for homosexuals was unbelievable. Same-sex marriage is not the issue. You passed an ordinance for this city in which the state has not sanctioned the practice of same-sex marriage. of same-sex marriage. This is tantamount to treason, malfeasance, gross negligence, and a crime involving moral perpetuity for which representatives of District 1, 2, 3, 4, and 7 should be removed from office, District 5 as well. You too, Ms. Graziano, abstaining from the vote won't get you off the hook. To vote in an ordinance before this legal says that somebody knows something the rest of us don't. Why is Mr. Agelastow, Mr. Blouse, Mr. Samuels, Mr. Hilbert, and Ms. Newbill rushing to put this ordinance forth? This ordinance deals with money and should require six votes, not five. You should check that out. This is an act of selfishness. What will happen next? Will we sanction men getting married to animals? I don't care how you have sex, but do not allow my monies to support it. Again, this is selfishness. Mr. Agelastow, are you hiding a fact? How about you, Mr. Blouse, or Mr. Hilbert? Ms. Newbill? The mayor is an ordained pastor, and yet we haven't heard a word from him about this very suspicious ordinance. Dwight, are you in the closet, or do you believe in God?
All right, Ms. Harvey, I'm going to interrupt you. Ms. Harvey, I got to interrupt you. Look, you are allowed to basically insult us when it comes to our public actions as elected officials.
I didn't bring this paper for you.
But you cannot-
You did.
You cannot do something-
You did, I didn't do it.
-that denigrates in a personal manner a member of this council.
Being a homosexual is not denigrating, is it?
You may continue. That's your warning.
Over 25% of our population live in poverty. When do we do something substantial for them? Most of us are Negroes who have had their houses torn down, their lands taken, and their self-respect ignored. When do we allow them to thrive with the monies they pay to the city?
You have 30 seconds, please begin to summarize.
More than half of our city employees live in other localities. Their funds and retirement benefits help some other locality. How can that be helpful to us? This state is named Virgin for a reason, and God will have His way. I ask you to repeal this ordinance and write another that states that a law of this city shall not preclude a law of the state of Virginia. If you refuse, the people of this city should remove you from office immediately. Where are the pastors anointed by God for this city? This discussion goes on-
Your time is up.
...on my radio program, Blog Talk Radio, Wake Up America.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Selden Richardson.
Mr. Richardson.
Madam Clerk, before we get going, could I ask that these photographs be distributed, please? Ladies and gentlemen of city council, my name is Selden Richardson. I'm a local historian as well as a Richmond taxpayer. In the discussion of the future of the Diamond and North Boulevard areas, there's been no mention of the building you see in these photographs that are being passed out. I'm afraid it may be one short. What appears to be just a deteriorating city storage shed is actually the former Westham Virginia train station. Built in 1911, this building originally stood beside the canal west of Richmond. You could have seen the station's lights from the bridge. After it was closed in 1962, the building was disassembled and moved to a site near what was then Parker Field and now stands north of the Diamond between it and I-95. The restored station served as part of a transportation exhibit until becoming the office of Richmond's Visitor's Center. Looking at the rotted walls and vines today, it's hard to imagine the train station was once so attractive and well-maintained that signs directed motorists to it from the interstate. All that ended in 2002 when the Visitors Bureau moved to the Convention Center. The Westham Train Station, a city property managed by the Department of Parks and Recreation, was allowed to deteriorate and fall into decay and has continued in that condition for more than 10 years. The former station has been moved before and should be moved again and restored or sold to some appropriate party who will restore it. Renovated, the building has all manner of tourist potential. If allowed to languish as it has been, it is sure to be condemned by the same mindless bureaucracy that has over the last decade tried to ensure its demise and destruction. Admittedly, the story of the Westham Train Station is not well-known, but it underscores an important point. The reign of indifferent absentee property owner has brought about the ruin of many American cities, often turning entire blocks into urban prairies. The indifferent absentee property owner is a figure that has cut the guts out of many Richmond neighborhoods, always leaving his calling card, vacant lot, peeling paint, and the plywood window. It is bitter irony that in the case of the former Westham Train Station, just as it was with Lee Street Armory, that the indifferent absentee property owner is you, this body and this administration. Again, if council is unable to summon a sufficient vision and leadership to find a use for the Westham Train Station, then surplus it with the agreement it will be preserved. I assure you that someone will recognize and utilize its-
You have 30 seconds, please begin to summarize.
-even if we as a city are incapable of this. Above all, please do not keep insulting your constituents and wasting their money by letting this and other city-owned buildings deteriorate. Richmond literally and figuratively cannot afford it. Our history is one of our principal commodities, and we cannot continue to again and again let publicly-owned historic resources like the Westham Train Station fall to demolition by neglect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. As folks may or may not know, this used to be the Traveland Park at Parker Field. It was developed as part of a nationwide service project by the Richmond J.C.'s the early to mid 1960s. The closest J.C. park apart from this one is located in Greenville, North Carolina, although there's numerous J.C. parks throughout the nation that resulted from that nationwide service project 60, almost 60 years ago. Our park in Richmond had a travel theme and, as Mr. Selden pointed, as Ms. Richardson pointed out, was the Richmond City and Regional Visitor's Center until it was moved to the downtown location at the Convention Center on Third. Original inventory, it was incredible. It had a locomotive and tender, a pullman car, a caboose, a rocket, a jet plane, and a fire engine. The park also had picnic tables for folks as they came through town to park, get out, and have their picnic lunch on their journey. When the visitor center moved downtown, a lot of the different displays were moved as well. The plane was returned to the Navy, the rocket was returned to the Army, the fire engine went to a museum, the pullman and caboose were sold to private individuals, and the locomotive and tender were moved to the Science Museum since it was being housed down at the old Main Street, excuse me, at the old Broad Street Station. Part of the plan when they moved the locomotive and the tender was to include moving the old Westham Station. As you may recall, the station was originally located in the far west end near the Huguenot Bridge. They were going to move it to the Science Museum as well. And it was going to be reused as a ticket booth and souvenir stand for a proposed three-quarter to a mile trolley loop that was to be constructed behind the museum on the property that is now the Redskins Training Complex. The trolley loop was supposed to celebrate and remember that Richmond had the first electric trolley system in the world back in 1887 and 1888. However, no funds were forthcoming from the state, the federal government, or the city in order to build the trolley loop, and the Science Museum declined therefore to move the station because of this lack of funding. Since the move did not occur, Parks and Rec has actually been charged with securing the building to prevent vandalism, and it's, is inventoried as property of the city now, and it does remain secure. Over the past 10 years, there's been numerous proposals that have been informal to remove the station and sell the property for a hotel, reuse for retail use, or expansion of that next-door credit union. None of those have come to fruition at this point. Clearly, we're going to be talking about what to do with this property in the weeks and months that follow, but I wanted to give you all a little bit of additional history to this and let you all know that it is on my radar, it is in my district, and it is on my radar, something that we need to preserve, but we do need to find a solution to it. Mr. Richardson, if you have suggestions, Lilia Jefferson is in the back, she has her hand raised, and if you want to either schedule a meeting with me or with members of Parks and Rec, perhaps Economic Development, let her know, and we'll make sure to get those meetings scheduled.
Oh, that's very kind of you. Mr. Samuels, I think the greater question, though, is why has this been allowed to happen? Where is the accountability? What does the Richmond Real Estate Office do?
Those are all great questions, and they're all great questions for the administration as well. And what we'll do is get you in touch with, through Ms. Jefferson, to the appropriate departments within the administration.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
Next speaker is Dirk Graham. Dirk Graham. Garrett Shiflett.
My name is Garrett Shiflett. I'm here to speak briefly about the Shaco Bottom. My office is located in Shaco Bottom, and I've been very familiar with the bottom since I was a kid. My father's had his offices in the bottom since the early 80s. I've been through all the floods, experienced the blight, the redevelopment, and the bars when I was younger. I've seen the bottom in all forms. I've seen it come from desolate area with boarded-up windows, buildings that were left vacant for many, many years. It's turned to a vibrant area where many people are out and about, businesses are open, lots of nicely renovated buildings that many hundreds of people call home. The bottom has many wonderful attributes, and it's close to a variety of transportation. It's right on the river, has great restaurants and nightlife. I've also noticed that within the past few years, a bit of stagnation, meaning that the bottom has all these wonderful attributes, but there's been nothing so far to bring it beyond what it is today, that, that extra push. The bottom can be a destination for people from the city and from outside of the city. It can be a great focal point for the city. We can draw the people out of the counties to spend money in the city, specifically in the bottom. It just needs that extra push, something that will bring people into the area, that will create jobs, something that will remove the remaining blight and make it shine, make it the destination that it should be. I'm excited of the future of downtown Richmond, and I'm also very pleased to see the, the cooperation that council and Mayor Jones have for one another, the fact that you all can work together so nicely. I feel this strong relationship is, it's going to be very beneficial in the transformation of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Gary Armstrong.
Mr. Armstrong?
President Samuels, Vice President Robertson, members of council, thank you so much for allowing me to speak this evening. My primary goal this evening was to discuss and really congratulate the city on the vast amount of economic development work that's been going on in the last several years. It's been very impressive. I'm a community banker in town. We've had an opportunity to participate and, and help local businesses and developers really build their businesses in Richmond, which in turn has resulted in great living spaces, great opportunities to work downtown, people moving downtown, creating a greater tax base for the city. So I think all of you should be congratulated on that continued work. You've been moving in bold ways. You know, the Redskins' opportunity was particularly impressive how the city pulled that off. The, the bike race, the world championships in 2015, another big commitment for the city to go after and show the world that we're ready to make Richmond a world-class city. So I encourage you to continue to think boldly as new opportunities show up. Continue to educate your constituents that these economic development opportunities bring added revenue to several, to, to solve other social issues around town that need to be addressed, and continue to think boldly. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is David Napier.
It's nice to see you again. I'm in Shaco Bottom as well. I'm sure I'll have a chance to speak often in the next few meetings. There'll be a lot going on, but it is a shame that people can use an artificial perception of our neighborhood against any investment or opportunity that you would be able to present. People that don't want to come downtown and bring their families, well, that's, the perception of our neighborhood needs to be changed, and it's, it's our responsibility as, as people that live in it and operate businesses, we need your help, we need the help from the administration. Our crime rate is low, our neighborhood is beautiful, it needs a little bit of work. Like, like the previous man said, we've kind of reached a, a flat point. But I'm going to address a specific situation, and a couple of weeks ago, we've been trying to get our alleys cleaned up. A man from the Department of Public Works came by, and basically he was telling several of our smaller restaurants that they can't put their supercans in the alley, but he doesn't have an alternative. We pay a lot of meals tax in Shaco Bottom, probably the most concentrated area of meals tax, I think, in the city. And if we had a little bit of that money back for a central trash collection, recycling, and oil place, you know, it's going to take a little bit of an investment, and since I guess the money has to come through council, I'm here to ask for a little of it back. Regardless of what happens with the bigger economic development proposals, this is a problem that we have now. Anything that happens in the future, this could be incorporated into a bigger economic development plan of some kind, whether it's what was presented today or something else. But we got dirty, greasy alleys, full of flies, sometimes they don't even pick up the trash on Friday nights. I'll take that up with the administration people, but if we want to keep getting the nice meals tax coming in, we need a clean place for people to come and eat. And if we want to bring their families down there, they shouldn't have to walk past filthy grease barrels that are, that don't get emptied and trash, it doesn't get picked up. We also would like to have, we're working on Wi-Fi through our neighborhood association. We'd love to see some cameras down there.
You have 30 seconds, please begin to summarize.
Thank you. Anyway, we'd like to ask for a little bit of what we give back so that we can make the neighborhood better, so we can give some more. And that's what I have to say tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Napier. Ms. Jefferson is in the back, she's back from speaking with Mr. Richardson. And if you want to pass those ideas on to her, and I think probably Dr. Newbill, Ms. Jefferson would like a copy of whatever is provided. Is that right, Dr. Newbill?
Yes.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Napier, I appreciate it.
Mr. President, I'd like to say something, being chairperson of Public Safety.
Ms. Trammell? Yes, please.
David, I'd like to thank you for coming down here tonight. Also, my colleague and I, we've been talking about, because she's my vice chair on public safety, we've been talking about doing beautification and cleaning up the alleys and things like that, because it's, it's everywhere, it's all over the city. And at the next Public Safety meeting, we have Mr. Jackson that's going to be attending, and we'd love to have you. It's the third Monday at 5:00 at the Police Academy.
That was Mr. Jackson who was down in Shaco Bottom.
Okay. Well, I know he's-
...W. Third Monday?
Well, while Ms. Trammell, while you're speaking with Mr. Napier, do you mind if we call the next speaker?
David, call me, I'll call you. Thank you.
Next speaker, Sheila Anderson.
Ms. Anderson. All right, next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Melvin Jones.
Mr. Jones, I know you're here.
Last month, we had, Ms. Trammell had a meeting at the Public Safety Police Academy, and I had a discussion about panhandling. The pictures that I'm passing around to you right now is a big problem that we have over in the north side at Isaiah and Chamberlain Avenue. You know, you got a school around there. Well, let me start off, August of this year, two kids almost got killed. A city vehicle got total loss at Isaiah and Chamberlain because of the fact that the panhandlers would get off the corner and go out there, and the traffic would be bottlenecking. So, and also, we've got the Blind Institute that's down the street from Henry Michael High School. I'm a disabled person myself. One day, y'all gonna get disabled, and to be out there to see what these people have to go through, the blind people can't actually work with the traffic signals because you've got the panhandlers sitting on the corner, they don't make theirself mighty comfortable. They've got milk crates with cushions, and every five points that you see in this picture here, Mr. Hilbert, that's in our area. here, Mr. Hilbert, that's in our area, is a panhandler on every corner. I'm asking Mr. Marshall to get the city workers, when they see those containers out there, throw them in the trash. I'm asking the police department, and tomorrow I'm gonna talk to the ABC board, because I've sat over there at the real school parking lot where they train the police dogs at, and you see them getting money from these people on the street, and they go right across the street at that convenience store and buy beer and drink it right on the side. That's not right. He's gonna lose his license. If I got anything to do with it, he's gonna lose his license. So, city council needs to enforce this panhandling. I mean, it's getting, they talk, you're talking about baseball diamond and all this kind of stuff. Y'all need to ride around and see what the hell is going on in the city. Because, I mean, it's really bad. I mean, five points, Mr. Hilbert, we got Henrico High School, you got John Marshall, and you got Henderson, and you got Pine Camp. You know, we gotta do something, Ms. Graziano, about to make it a little bit longer.
You have 30 seconds. Please begin to summarize.
These people can't keep hustling people like this. You know, and Mr. City Attorney, your people were there and they need to try to do something too. I mean, if it's a misdemeanor, keep throwing the misdemeanors on them. And they keep getting many more misdemeanors, they going to jail for a long time. So you gotta do something. So, I mean, we got a paper that's in here. The Richmond Police Department needs to start there enforcing it.
Your time is up.
And I'm asking y'all for some help on this.
Mr. President.
Ms. Trammell.
Melvin, thank you for coming to the public safety meeting last month. I know that you brought this issue up, and it seems like since it's been reported, it has been more, I've seen so many more panhandlings out there on the Jefferson Davis corridor, on Bell's Road. I mean, it's everywhere. This is just, you know, we need to look at it. And some of the people I've seen, as you said, get the money and then go to the convenience store. I didn't follow them in there to see what they were buying. I don't know what they were buying, but it's, when they're leaving the cigarettes and the bags and all of that, I mean, this is something that we need to talk not only to the police chief, but also to Mr. Marshall about, you know, how do we go about enforcing it, or what do we fine them for leaving the littering all over the streets and things like that? And I think there needs to be more discussion on this.
Ms. Samuels, I did have one thing I would like to say. When they doing the traffic, when the bridges were shut down, they doing 95, and the people had to get off at Chamberlain Avenue to come through the city, it was real embarrassing to see that. You got five people on each corner, and you know, people late for work, getting off of 95 because of the bridge work. I mean, you know, come on, y'all. Y'all gotta get better.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I live just a few blocks from this area, and I have certainly talked about this. It's unfortunate that people gather literally right under the Welcome to Richmond sign, and it is something of which we are discussing to try and do more about. I will say that the, that there's only one way to do legal panhandling on a street corner. And I don't want to give anybody ideas, but let's just say that if you, if you don't see someone handing money out to someone standing on a sidewalk from the passenger side of their car, they're breaking the law. You cannot stand in the median, you cannot solicit cars from the median, you cannot solicit cars from the street at all. There's pedestrian walkways there, and you're jaywalking if you're doing these other things, you're impeding traffic. And certainly, it's not something that we would encourage anyone to do, and I think, quite frankly, one of the ways to stop it is for people to stop giving people money and thereby encouraging this type of behavior. But we, as a city, need to do our part to clean this up. So I thank you for coming forward. We've got a lot of, as you said, investment in this area, as well as our neighbor Henrico High School, right there to the north of this area. So I would let you know that I'm going to continue to talk about this, and our corridors into the city don't need to be havens for this kind of activity. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that was the last speaker, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
All right. I believe we do not have any expedited resolutions tonight.
That is correct.
May we please move to approval of the minutes?
Yes, sir. The minutes to be approved are from the informal meeting of Monday, October the 28th at 3:00 PM, and the formal meeting of Monday, October 28th at 6:00 PM. Councilor Newbill, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Council is voting on Councilmember Newbill's motion to approve the minutes as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby? Vice President Robertson? Mr. Agulhas? Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Those minutes have been adopted.
Thank you. May we please move forward with the reports and announcements? Mr. Bilalz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two announcements. One is, we will be having a meeting about a special use permit in the Libby Grove area at 5805 Grove Avenue. Meeting will take place Wednesday, November 20th at 6:00 PM at St. Christopher's Middle School, which is on Ferguson Road. And we will be having a First District Town Hall meeting Tuesday, November 26th, two days before Thanksgiving. That will be at Albert Hill Middle School, also at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Ms. Graziano?
Thank you, Mr. President. Financial meet on the 21st, Thursday the 21st at 3:00. There will be a meeting regarding the trees conservation program for the Archer Springs Development. That will be on November 21st at 6:00 at Dugodot Methodist Church. And I believe that's it for right now. Thanks.
Ms. Mosby?
A Veterans Day shout-out to all those who have and continue to serve in the armed forces to preserve our basic freedoms. Prayers to over 4 million people in the Philippines affected by the super typhoon that has been reported, that over 10,000 are dead. Prayers to them. The cold weather shelter opens November 11th through the 13th at the City of Richmond Public Safety Building, and that's at 501 North 9th Street. The Melothean 9th District Civic Meeting chaired by Ms. Alma Moore will be held on Tuesday, November 12th at 6:00 PM at the South Side Plaza Social Service Building. Be expecting the upcoming 9th District Newsletter before the holidays to stay informed and abreast to the happenings in the 9th District. And the 9th District now has a new liaison, which is Yousia Harris, and he can be reached at yousia.harris@richmondgov.com, and the number is 804-646-2779. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosby. Mr. Dr. Newbill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of announcements. The 7th District Civic Association Presidents' Meeting is scheduled for this Saturday, November 20, excuse me, November 23rd at 10:00 AM. Saturday, November 23rd at 10:00 AM, and the location will be the East End Library at 1200 North 25th Street. Again, that's the 7th District Civic Association Presidents' Meeting. Would like to really just express sincere thanks and appreciation to all of our staff, council liaison, as well as staff in the Chief of Staff's Office, who worked diligently to ensure that we had a successful Senior Information Fest without fail. Every senior I spoke to, as I entered the Richmond Convention Center, talked about how successful and how valuable the event was. Again, I simply want to say thank you, Ms. Ali, for all of your staff assistance, but especially to the council liaisons who took a real leadership role in coordinating this event. Certainly, my liaison, Sam Patterson, and Ida, just all of the liaisons were very instrumental in ensuring the success of that event. So we look forward to that occurring again next year, probably the same time. So, again, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to thank my colleague who just spoke about the Senior Fest Day. It was very exciting, and a lot of the seniors really, really enjoyed it. And also, I'd like to thank Yvette Jones for all of her hard work, and our staff, and also, Luella Lee, your staff did an excellent job, and our liaisons getting the word out. And Steve Skinner for all the things that he did with, and Deborah Handy for publication of our Senior Day. Also, one of my seniors, she attended it, and she got the recipe for marinated kale salad, and it is good. She made me some. It is really, really good. So I want to thank her for that. And also, I want everybody to know that Hickory Hill Community Center, that's in our 8th District, and if you would call 646-7934, that's 646-7934, you can call there and join the gym. The gym is only $15 a month, and it's not only for seniors, it's for everybody. But we do have some senior events there. We do line dancing, we do, let me see, Senior Workout Club, Road Runners Senior Club, Ping Pong, Chicago Steppers, that's the swinging, swinging team. So again, if you would call that number, 646-7934, and ask them how much does it cost, where there is a fee to join the other things that they have at the Hickory Hill Community Center. And again, it's only $15 to join the gym, and it's open from 12:30, I think it's 12:30 to 9:00 PM. So I hope that, right now, we only have a few members. We want to get up to about 200 members. So please come and join. Also, our next 8th District meeting will be November the 21st, that's next Thursday, November the 21st, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Satellite 4,000 Block of Jefferson Davis. We will have somebody from Animal Control that will be there to talk to us about different concerns that the citizens are having about cats and barking dogs. Also, Anthony McLean from the, he's the Deputy Director of Emergency Management Services, he will be there, and to talk to us about hurricane and how to be prepared for a disaster if one was to happen in the City of Richmond. Also, I just want to take this moment to say thank you to all of our city employees here at City Hall, and also the Police Department, Fire Department, EMS, even the Sheriff's Office, the ones that are, that are out there helping all of us, as citizens, and a lot of times, they don't even get a thank you. From the ones that pick up our supercans, to picking up Public Works, Public Utilities, to, like I said, Animal Control, everyone, and if I'm leaving anybody out, please forgive me, but anyway, our employees do, they do a lot. They do a whole lot for, what is it, almost 200,000 citizens in this city. And, you know, Mr. Marshall gets blamed for some things, but we have to realize, Mr. Marshall has a lot on his plate, and he does a heck of a good job. With nine council members, and also with the citizens that call his office, you know, upset, those, his employees, they handle, and I'm speaking for the 8th District, because I know sometimes they get upset with me, and you have to listen, but anyway, I know they get upset with Mr. Marshall's office when things are not done today. But he has encouraged the citizens in Richmond, not only the 8th District, but in the city, to call 311. If you call 311, get that tracking number and ask, and when will my alley be clean, or when will you pick up the mattresses, or whatever? Just make sure you get a tracking number and get, when will you be able to take care of this issue? So please do that. Also, this is your smoke alarm. If you call 646-1526, 646-1526, these firefighters will come to your home, they will put the smoke alarm up for you for free. It doesn't cost anything. Police officers don't do this, Animal Control don't do this, the Fire Department does this. So please call them, and if not, go to the nearest fire station and set up an appointment so the men or women can come to your home, your apartment, your business, and put this free smoke alarm up and give you a battery. Thank you. See you next Thursday, 6:00 PM at the Satellite. That's our next 8th District meeting.
Thanks, Ms. Trammell. Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next Health and Human Services and Education Standing Committee will be next Wednesday, the 20th of November at 5:00 PM. The committee will hear a presentation from Adele Johnson, the Executive Director of the RPS Education Foundation, on the outcomes achieved from the Innovation and Excellence in Education special grant that was given via the City Council last year, and additional funds were appropriated this year. So this is a very important initiative and something that we invested over $1 million in from the RMA proceeds over a year ago, and we appreciate Ms. Johnson and her diligence, and look forward to her presentation on the, on the outcomes. The next 3rd District meeting is Wednesday, December the 11th at 6:00 PM at Pine Camp, next to Henderson Middle School and adjacent to John Marshall High School. We hope that everyone will attend. This is our holiday get-together in addition, or in lieu of our November meeting, which would normally be held on the 4th Wednesday, but that would put it the evening before Thanksgiving. So Wednesday, December the 11th, 6:00 at Pine Camp. On Tuesday, November the 19th, there'll be a Business Marketing Conference being sponsored by the Minority Business Development and Economic and Community Development Departments of the City of Richmond, and will be held at the Richmond Police Academy at 1201 West Graham Road. This is a free event, so please contact the Minority Business Development Group in order to register for this event. There'll also be, on November the 20th at 6:00, the Quarterly Neighborhood Watch Meeting. If your neighborhood association has a Neighborhood Watch, please attend. That'll be Wednesday, November the 20th at 6:00 PM at Richmond Police Headquarters, 200 West Gray Street downtown. There is parking available on the street or in the parking lot just east of the facility of the police headquarters. So please come, and you need to register for this, so please send an email to paul.lewis, L-E-W-I-S, at richmondgov.com, or phone at 646-7179. This will be very important, that you be able to meet with the new watch, the new Neighborhood Watch Coordinator, as well as precinct sector lieutenants and environmental officers to help you with environmental situations within your neighborhood, which may be at least not maybe encouraging or allowing the negative activity to happen in your neighborhoods, and things to look out for on your Neighborhood Watch. Mr. President, Mr. Agulhas asked that I be able to read his announcements with.
Yes, please.
Thank you. The urban forestry and tree arborists are looking for tree stewards, so if you are interested in becoming a tree steward, there is classes and registration open for the 2014 sessions. To learn more about this, please go to richmonetreestewards.org and to register for the 2014 sessions. Dr. Elizabeth O'Leary will be discussing the history of the Carolawn and surrounding neighborhoods during a lecture held at the Richmond Historical, excuse me, the Virginia Historical Society on Thursday, November the 14th, from noon until 1:00 PM. This lecture will focus on the formation of the Carolawn Civic Association and its role in the turbulent 60s and 70s in nurturing one of Virginia's first successfully integrated communities. The lecture is free to Historical Society members and is $5 for adults. The Uptown Association will meet on Tuesday, November the 12th, at Nesbit Salon and Spa, 2311 West Main Street at 6:00. They will be discussing the Floyd Avenue Bike Boulevard. The Carolawn Civic Association will meet on Tuesday, November the 12th, from 7:00 to 8:30 at the Byrd Roundhouse. The Carolawn Civic Association will also be celebrating its 45th birthday on Sunday, November the 17th, from 3:00 to 5:00, also at the Byrd Park Roundhouse. The 5th District Annual Christmas Party will be held on Thursday, December the 12th at 6:30 at the Virginia War Memorial. And Mr. Agulhas wanted to thank those that have submitted CIP requests to his office, and I'd also like to thank everyone who took the time to mail back the 5th District Constituent Survey. He values your feedback and looks forward to serving you better. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert and Mr. Agulhas. Vice President Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple announcements. First of all, I'd like to join my colleagues and express a map, thanks and appreciation for the work that our veterans have done for the city and for our state, for the nation. the work that our veterans have done for the city, and for our state, for the nation. There will be a meeting, there are a couple of meetings that are coming up, that I'd just like to extend an invitation to the citizens of Richmond. In North Highland Park, the Quality of Life Leadership Team will be having its meeting on Monday, gosh, next Monday, what's the date? I'll come back to that. 18th? Thank you. 18th at 6:00, from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, at the Anne Harty Park Plaza. That's the Quality of Life Leadership Team. Also, the Creative Workforce Initiative, which is a city workforce center located at 900 East Marshall Street, will be having its ribbon-cutting ceremony from 9:30 to 10:30 next week on the 19th, I think, from 9:30 to 10:30. The Workforce Center will be having its ribbon-cutting ceremony at 900 East Marshall Street. Also, on the 23rd of this month, November, the Magel Walker Poverty Initiative will be having its presentation and retreat on its recommendations that it's putting together, and though it's a meeting to the Board, there will be open to the public to the extent that there's space available, and it will be held here at City Hall. And for those who want to have an opportunity to see what kind of recommendations are coming from our task force for the Anti-Poverty Commission, I encourage you to attend. And even though this is a little ways out, the Greater Richmond Chamber is bringing Senator Mike Johnson from Denver?
I think so.
Denver to the City of Richmond on December the 11th, from 7:30 to 9:00. Senator Johnson has done a tremendous job in looking at education reform, and we had an opportunity, we went out there last year for an inner-city visit, to receive a presentation from him, which was quite informative, as to the aggressive things that the state is doing to address education reform, and that's one of our council's top priorities, to look at ways that we can improve academic achievements in the City of Richmond. So I wanted to ask my colleagues to put that on their calendar early, December the 11th. You can check with the Chamber, who's bringing him in town, to make reservations. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Robertson. For those that are interested, there's going to be a paper introduced tonight that has to do with baseball and the proposal the mayor had the press conference in this morning. It's going to be sent to both Land Use and Finance Committees of City Council. I believe Land Use is, and Mr. Bilalz, if you make sure I'm right here, November 19th at 3:00 p.m., and Finance, Ms. Graziano, November 21st at 3:00 p.m. So those are going to be the first two public comment periods on this new proposal, so if those that are interested want to put that on their calendars, I would greatly appreciate it. The Museum District Association will be having their annual meeting this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. at 3330 Grove Avenue. And lastly, I want to say thank you to all the veterans that have given so that our country can succeed. Ms. Trammell, you had a question?
Mr. President, can you repeat those dates again?
Yes. November 19th at 3:00 p.m., November 21st at 3:00 p.m., both here in this very room.
And the citizens can have an opportunity to come here, but they're not?
Those are both public -- those are both going to be public comment periods.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Sure thing. I'm sure Mr. Bilalz and Ms. Graziano are thrilled I mentioned it. That being the case, Madam Clerk, would you please introduce any new papers?
Yes, sir. Ordinance Number 2013-229, to authorize the CAO to accept funds of $69,883 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, and appropriate the increase to fiscal year 1314 special fund budget by increasing revenues and appropriating funds to the Department of Justice Services for planning and implementation of evidence-based principles and practices in the city's community corrections program. Public Safety, November 18, 5:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, November 25th. Ordinance 2013-230, to authorize CAO to accept $40,000 from VDOT, and to increase fiscal year 1314 capital budget by increasing revenues and appropriating funds to the Department of Public Works Bike Share's Lanes Project in the Transportation category for the purpose of funding the Floyd Avenue Bike Boulevard project to optimize travel for bicyclists and pedestrians between its intersections with North Laurel and North Thompson Streets. Planning Commission, November 18, 1:30 p.m. Council Public Hearing, November 25th. Ordinance 2013-231, to authorize the CAO to execute a standard project administration agreement between the city and VDOT for the development and administration of the Floyd Avenue Bike Boulevard project. Land Use Housing and Transportation, November 19, 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, November 25th. Ordinance 2013-232, to amend and reordain City Code Section 7470 concerning alternative forms of security for the purpose of reflecting amendments to Virginia Code Section 2.2-4338, allowing acceptance of a cashier's check in lieu of a bid, performance, or payment bond. Governmental Operations, November 19, 5:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, November 25th. Ordinance 2013-233, to amend Ordinance Number 2006-256268, adopted October 23, '06, which authorized the special use of the properties 2300 and 2306 Jefferson Avenue for restaurant purposes and the construction of an addition to the building for the purpose of authorizing the sale of beer and wine for off-premises consumption. Planning Commission, December 2nd, 1:30 p.m. Council Public Hearing, December 9th. Ordinance 2013-234, to authorize the special use of the property 1213 Wesley Street for the purpose of permitting two single-family detached dwelling units. Planning Commission, December 2nd, 1:30 p.m. Council Public Hearing, December 9th. Ordinance 2013-235, to authorize the special use of the property 1314 Parkwood Avenue for the purpose of permitting a two-family detached dwelling. Planning Commission, December 2nd, 1:30 p.m. Council Public Hearing, December 9th. Ordinance 2013-236, to authorize the special use of the property 2116 Rear West Carey Street for the purpose of permitting two dwelling units and an existing structure, garages, and a parking area. Planning Commission, December 2nd, 1:30 p.m. Council Public Hearing, December 9th. Ordinance 2013-237, to amend and reordain City Code Sections 114-433.2 concerning permitted uses in the urban business district, 114-434.1 B1 Neighborhood Business District, 114.436.1 B2 Community Business District, and 114-438.1 B3 General Business District for the purposes of imposing certain minimum ground floor area requirements, and prohibiting parking uses along a principal street frontage. Planning Commission, December 2nd, 1:30 p.m. Council Public Hearing, December 9th. Resolution 2013-R250, to endorse for the city legislative proposals set forth within the document entitled 2014 City of Richmond Legislative Proposals for the Virginia General Assembly to request the Richmond delegation to the General Assembly of Virginia to take legislative action, consist with and ambiguous support of such recommendations to support other legislative action recommendations, and to encourage other organizations and individuals to support such recommendations. Council Public Hearing, November 25th. Resolution 2013-R251, to approve an expenditure of $1,550 from Council District Funds for Second District to pay the Department of Information Technology for the printing and mailing of the Second District winter 2013 newsletter. Council Public Hearing, November 25th. Resolution 2013-R252, to amend the rules of procedure adopted by Resolution 2013-R11, adopted January 2nd, 2013, as amended by Resolution Number 2013-R158152, adopted July 22nd, 2013, for the purpose of changing the dates on which regular council meetings are to be held from the second and fourth Mondays of each month to the second Monday of each month, providing that the fourth Monday of each month shall be reserved for special meetings for emergency introduction purposes only, and providing for an organizational development standing committee. Governmental Operations Committee, November 19th at 5:00 p.m. Organizational Development, December 2nd, 5:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, December 9th. Resolution 2013-R253, to encourage and support participation in the Love Lights Program for 1314 year with a display lasting until January 1, 2014. Education and Human Services, November 20th, 5:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, November 25th. Resolution Number 2013-R254, to support the city administration's efforts to settle certain claims asserted by certain owners of real property abuding Princeton Creek in the City of Richmond. Finance and Economic Development, November 21 at 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, November 25th. Resolution 2013-R255, to express the council's support for an economic revitalization and cultural heritage redevelopment project in the Shaco Bottom area of the city at a cost to the city and the Economic Development Authority not to exceed $79,625,000, including a new baseball stadium, a slavery and freedom heritage site, private mixed-use commercial, retail, and residential development, and related public infrastructure improvements. Land Use Housing and Transportation, November 19, 3:00 p.m. Finance and Economic Development, November 21st, 3:00 p.m. Council Public Hearing, November 25th. Mr. President, that concludes all the new legislation.
Thank you. Unless any council members have any other business, this meeting is adjourned.
It got started right on time. We had appointments and reappointments, boards and presentations. By the time we got done with those, we were down just a few items, and by the time we got done with the docket review, we were down to one item only that was on the consent agenda. That took one minute before that passed unanimously. Citizens' Comment Period got started about 10 minutes till 7:00, and then at 20 after, we had the approval of minutes, the reports from council, introduction of new papers, and now at 7:45, we are done. Now, I want to reiterate the paper concerning the Shaco Bottom, and that is the one that's expressing city council's support for the economic revitalization and cultural heritage development in Shaco Bottom. That one, if you want to come down and speak to that. The first chance will be at the Land Use Housing and Transportation Committee meeting on November 19th, that's a week from tomorrow, at 3:00 p.m. right here in council chambers. And the next will be on the 21st, which will be 10 days from now, for the Finance and Economic Development Committee, and that will also be at 3:00 p.m. And they are both here at Richmond City Council Headquarters, they're right here in the council chambers. So the 19th at 3:00 p.m., the 21st at 3:00 p.m. If you want to speak on the project, on the ballpark papers, I guess what we're going to call them, the Shaco Bottom Paper, I guess would be a better definition for it. So that's what it sounds like, and we are going to be done from now. We'll meet again with you on the 25th of November. At that time, there's supposed to be a public hearing on the papers as well. So we look forward to seeing you two weeks from tonight. Till then, before gavel to gavel, I'm Dick Harmon saying goodnight.